Meeting of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education to Order. And I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Carol Sawyer, a second from Margaret Marshall. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Any opposed? And I saw your hand raised, Ms. Cheek. So, Madam Clerk, the agenda is adopted by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. And I'm now going to call on at-large Board Member Jennifer De La Hara to introduce this evening's pledge leader.
Good evening. I am very happy to introduce everyone to Lucy George. She is an eighth grader at Randolph Middle School, where she has enjoyed being part of the Debate Club and the Gay Straight Alliance. When she is not in school, Lucy likes reading and singing. Go ahead, Lucy, and recite the pledge.
Do we need to unmute her? I think her audio is coming through. We may have you start over, Lucy. We're getting your volume fixed here.
Go ahead, Lucy, if you'd like to read your statement.
Thank you for having me. Thank you to my social studies teacher, Mr. Oreskovic, for this opportunity. Social Studies has always been one of my favorite subjects, and it has taught me to see, or it has taught me about the importance of looking at situations from a different point of view and being open-minded. I think it is important for everyone to be more open-minded in order for us to act with kindness and understanding for one another. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, so we're now going to move on to requests from the public, and I shall read the rules. Each speaker will be called in to speak one at a time unless you are part of a group. Each speaker will have a maximum of two minutes to address the board. Groups will have seven. Each speaker may speak on any topic of their choice except for individual student matters or specific personnel matters. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Profanity or other inappropriate language will not be allowed. And the board reserves the right to mute any speaker who violates these rules. And with that, I will call in the first three speakers. And as a reminder, we are meeting in person, but the city still has the government center closed to the public, and so our speakers are joining us via Zoom. So the first speaker is Lasagna Collins, followed by David Olson, and then Sheri Abel.
Ms. Collins isn't with us, Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins is not here. Okay, so then our first speaker would be David Olson, followed by Sheri Abel, and then Lisa O'Brien. Go right ahead, Mr. Olson, we hear you.
All right. Is there any way to see the participant list on this call?
What do you mean by that?
Is there any way to see how many participants are in this call?
Well, yeah, you're livestreamed on Facebook Live, and there are a number of speakers waiting to speak after you, and then there's a group of us in the room here.
All right, sounds great. Firstly, thank you for having me. This is my first school board meeting. I don't have a child of age for CMS yet, but I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. I live in Colonial Village, near Dilworth Campus, Sedgfield Campus. And I like to walk through the neighborhood. And so what prompted me to request to speak is walking through the neighborhood, by the school, and particularly by the playground, where I see nearly every day children who are separated, wearing masks on the playground. And I just wanted to address a couple of statements on your website that you have a set of commitments. And one of them is give all students access to a well-rounded, rigorous curriculum that is evidence-based and data-informed. And I would say that that practice directly contradicts that commitment. Having children wear masks on a playground is neither evidence-based or data-informed, and the science is very clear on that. Number two, you have a commitment to make all students be successful in higher learning or the workforce, but there's no mention of entrepreneurship or any other type of achievement. And so to me, higher learning or the workforce makes me think that you are creating drones rather than human beings. Number three, it says that you'll create a safe and orderly learning environment. And again, wearing masks, there's science to the debate on whether that is ultimately safe or healthy for children. Number four, it does say you're embracing diversity, and this is the least of my concerns, but the school board is nine out of 10 women. Just wanted to throw that out there. So my background, I have an engineering degree from Stanford University, played football there, graduated early, and played professional football. And I just wanted to say that I was homeschooled through sixth grade before going to public school. And for any mom out there that is listening, you too can homeschool your child. Your school system and your state is given over to nefarious powers that you have no control over at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olson, your time is up.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Sheri Abel, followed by Lisa O'Brien, and then our first group.
I'm sorry. I got a little distracted.
Okay.
May I start now?
Yes, go right ahead. Are you Sheri Abel?
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. My name is Dr. Sheri Abel. My doctorate degree is in education. I feel as a teacher, it is so important that we teach our children how to think, not what to think. We need to teach them how to develop intellectual curiosity and critical thinking. Teaching does not involve indoctrination or groupthink. This said, most concerning to many of the parents of this state is the critical race theory. Their children are coming home upset with many questions as to why they are victims and/or hated. And furthermore, I cannot help but believe that it must be very frightening to an impressionable child of color to hear that they are victims of systemic racism and that a child who has a different color of skin, white, is not to be trusted, not to mention the confusion and hurt of the white child who is being told they are part of a white supremacy group whose purpose is to oppress people of color when just yesterday they were playing with the child of color with no ill thoughts at all towards that playmate. Remember what Dr. King said? "I look to a day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." Critical race theory is attempting to teach children of color that people of white skin are evil and to be feared, while a white child is taught they are to be ashamed of who they are. The children are simply being taught hatred, division, and how to be racist. Instead of, why not teach the child how, or children, how much they have in common and to respect, support, and love each other? As board members, please speak up and protect these children. Regardless of color, they all are quickly becoming victims of the very adults who they look up to and trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lisa O'Brien, and then we've got a group that's Bill Kessler, Trinity Jeffries, Henry Romero, Dariana Gonzalez Aguilar, and Chris Reed. So Lisa O'Brien, you are up next. And you're up, Ms. O'Brien.
Start or?
We hear you. You're up, Ms. O'Brien.
I can't hear anything to know whether it's my time.
It is your, it's your time. We hear you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. Good evening. We are giving them a half a billion dollars to educate the children of Mecklenburg County, and we expect outcomes. That statement was issued by the county manager when she proposed withholding 11% of the CMS budget until the district outlines a plan to close our enormous achievement gaps. As a taxpayer and CMS parent, I also expect outcomes, and I'm pleased that someone is holding the school board accountable for the massive failures this year. Ms. Dashu recently stated that, quote, "We have a real passion for helping students succeed. We have some huge disparities, and those kids show up to school with those disparities," end quote. Where was that passion and concern during the 11 and a half months that kids were denied in-person learning? Explain why it took a Senate bill and 14 months of hybrid learning to finally resume a five-day week. Left up to this board's plan, our kids would have returned to full remote learning yesterday for the final three weeks of the year. Why did we have to fight for our athletes to compete and for theater parents to see their kids perform? Why are sporting events still at 30% capacity and other CMS events at 0% when the governor recommends 50%? So Ms. Dashu, it's rather ironic when you speak about dismantling the barriers that keep kids from succeeding. School boards and superintendents, who prioritize teachers, unions, and politics over students, have been the biggest barrier this year, and our kids lost a year of their childhood as a result. So Ms. Dashu, you're absolutely right. Our kids do deserve better. They deserve a solid education, and they deserve normalcy. Put your passion into action and be a school board that acts in the best interest of children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a group of Bill Kessler, Trinity Jeffries, Henry Romero, Dariana Gonzalez Aguilar, and Chris Reed.
All right, are you, are you ready for me to start?
Yes, go right ahead.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Superintendent Winston and CMS school board members. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Bill Kessler. I'm a doctoral student at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. It is my honor to introduce these CMS seniors. We've worked together for months to get to know Trinity, Henry, and Dariana through this pandemic, throughout this pandemic. We've seen their college acceptances, met their moms, met their sisters, and even their goats. These seniors even want to meet with us over spring break. Now they are here to share their voices about their experiences during the pandemic and their willingness to collaborate for future solutions. They are concerned about equity, mental health, and opportunities to register for magnet programs and college preparatory classes. How can we together make next year and the years to come even better? Trinity is our first speaker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Winston, and members of the CMS board. My name is Trinity Jeffries. I am an IB senior and will be attending UNC Chapel Hill next fall, and my future goal is to work in the healthcare field as an anesthesiologist. Today, I want to speak to you about the parents and students who have experienced challenges with learning during COVID. There are many families like my own who express feeling helpless and have limited knowledge on how to support their children with their transition to distance learning. I learned this past year that resources and support for families on how to navigate their learning are vital for improving the educational success of students. Some families need additional help with how to utilize educational apps, particularly for elementary students navigating campus and how to troubleshoot when there are technical problems with virtual learning. There were many cases where I came downstairs to my confused little sister and parents trying to help her join her class. After the unexpected impact that COVID had on everyone, I would encourage the board to use this as an opportunity to be proactive going into next year. I believe parents need more resources for communication and access to virtual workshops to learn how to help their child get through both virtual and in-person learning. And if they include translations for those who speak a different language other than English, this will be even better. If parents have trouble with technology, they can maybe go to the school and socially distance in a larger area. Additionally, the mental health of the students and staff is so important. Social emotional learning sessions for students are so important to handle stress and problem-solved life challenges. Teachers and administrators have helped, but we need more, since for some, trauma and stress doesn't easily go away. It would be great if students could have access to social emotional support, even after COVID, since many may still have some difficulty readjusting. The pandemic has left a drastic impact mentally on thousands of students. As a high school student, I can say that my stress level has skyrocketed this past year. Receiving even more resources as we move into a new academic school year to support students and teachers mentally would encourage us all to keep pushing through and working hard. Thank you for having us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Winston, and members of the CMS board. My name is Henry Romero, and I'm a 12th grade IB senior in CMS. Just last December, I advocated for equitable access to middle and high school magnet programs for ESL and minority students. I wanted to follow up on our advocacy for our community and emphasize how our stories can be commonplace for students of color throughout the district with the appropriate resources and support. I'm a future first-generation college student, and my parents are immigrants whose academic careers consisted of a combined total of five school years. I attended an IB magnet high school, and I earned a full-ride scholarship to Emory University, where I will be majoring in human health next fall. The trajectory of my academic career would have been drastically different if it hadn't been for one-on-one guidance from my teacher on applying to the magnet lottery in eighth grade. A solution I mentioned back in December was advisory periods, where students can be guided through applying for the lottery, like I was. I propose these periods could be in the class schedules of fifth and eighth-grade students, weeks in advance of the first-round lottery window opening. I also believe students like Trinity, Dariana, and I should work closely with the CMS Equity Committee to create a curriculum for these advisory periods that ensures every student feels heard and informed. I believe there is no better time than right now to begin considering these suggestions. We can start to mitigate the setbacks from the COVID-19 pandemic early on. I would love the opportunity to have an extended conversation with you about my experiences so that you can more thoroughly understand my passion behind advocating for these causes. Perhaps even you might encourage the CMS Equity Committee to meet with the student advocacy groups like ours. Thank you for your time and undivided attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Winston, and members of the board. My name is Dariana Gonzalez, and like Trinity and Henry, I'm also an IB senior in CMS. Today, like Henry, I stand before you again to represent CMS families who are struggling with the CMS lottery application. The CMS lottery application has the potential to open a myriad of opportunities for students, from allowing them to enroll in intellectually stimulating courses to increasing their probability of being accepted into and being prepared for the colleges of their choice. I, for one, was able to gain access to rigorous IB diploma courses at my high school that facilitated my acceptance to Harvard University as a first-generation and immigrant student. But taking advantage of these opportunities proved truly challenging for myself and for a large portion of CMS students, as families unfamiliarity with technology, English, or the programs available within the district, as well as restricted access to in-person resources as a result of the pandemic have made the opportunities offered by the CMS lottery difficult to access. With the 2021-2022 school year quickly approaching, we're committed to working alongside you to improve future students' access to the CMS lottery. We would like to help you host parent-teacher organizations online and integrate lessons on applying to the CMS lottery into them. We could also help you develop video tutorials and multilingual application instructions under the family section of the CMS website. And finally, we could help you design and distribute flyers containing step-by-step instructions on how to apply to the CMS lottery in multiple languages to families at the start of each school year. While the pandemic only exacerbated the challenges of access to the CMS lottery application, the upcoming school year offers us the opportunity to be proactive in ensuring greater equity in the lottery system process. We hope that you will search within the CMS student body to find others like us who are committed to working with you to make a better future for CMS students. Thank you.
Superintendent Winston and ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to these young scholars. These students presented to you this evening because they have a desire to be involved in the decision-making process in some way. They exercise their voices and their support of equity and educational access within CMS. This presentation you have heard tonight was an opportunity for them to begin to form collaborations between the board and equity committees and other CMS scholars. The UNC Charlotte members of our collaboration are proud of the individual accomplishments of these students, and we are excited about the possibility of them working with you in the future. This experience for us has been an enjoyable one. We hope that you will consider taking the time to talk with these brilliant students, get to know them, and learn from them, just as we have done. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And can you tell me what school or schools you attend? Oh, we've got them muted now. Just curious. Say that again, Ms. Fowler.
Trinity Jeffries attends North Mecklenburg High School as an IB student.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, we'll find that out later, confirm all of that. Okay, next, we have the second group, which is Natasha Liskom, Jalen Jones, Josiah Jones, and Chloe Stouffer.
Madam Chair, we don't have any of them in the waiting room.
So this group isn't here? Okay. So then our final speaker of the night would be Glenn Stevens.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Stevens, you're up.
Mr. Stevens, you may go.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, you're up, Mr. Stevens, go right ahead.
Are we ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Trust but verify. This Russian proverb was made famous during the presidency of Ronald Reagan when negotiating nuclear disarmament treaties with the then-Soviet Union. It can pertain to many other relationships as well. Much has been made of the considerations surrounding educator work agreements and classroom educator lesson accountability. But at the beginning of the school year, I stated emphatically that parents and community leaders applaud the vast majority of CMS faculty and staff. I even stated this as I personally was being attacked by a small but vocal minority of educators on social media. But applauding the valiant efforts of the CMS staff doesn't preclude the need to hold staff accountable through a vast means of accountability. So imagine the community's surprise as CMS has sought to have accountability measures already in place or those proposed lessened, removed, or defeated in the General Assembly and Board of County Commissioners. Let's take a look at a few. First, a waiver of integrated tests and in-of-course testing. We have no problem with not holding students accountable for these assessments. After all, it is not their fault that CMS chose not to open schools in accordance with state guidelines until it was far too late in the year. However, one cannot fix that which is broken until one actually knows the extent of the damage. Second, reducing the requirements for a licensed educator to maintain or earn a four-year work agreement. What will happen is that those who have entered the profession and not performed as requested for a four-year work agreement will continue to receive the support afforded them by a one-year contract. Current educators with a four-year work agreement who need them will be similarly given the support of a one-year agreement until such time as those supports are no longer needed. Third, recently, the majority of the Board of Education voted to extend the superintendent's contract, give him a raise, and provide a severance. All of this despite numbers which indicate that CMS's enrollment fell. CMS was kept closed longer than guidance from Raleigh suggested, and CMS parents are performing.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Okay, I believe, unless the other group has come through, no? Okay. Madam Clerk, did we receive any public? Madam Clerk, did we receive any public comments by email?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any public comment via email.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And so we will then, I think we're done with requests from the public, and we shall move on to the consent items. Is there a motion that the board approved the consent agenda items?
Second.
A motion from Carol Sawyer, a second from Lenora Ship. Before we move to a vote, does any board member wish to pull any part of this item for individual consideration? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please let it be known by a show of hands. Any opposed? And I could not see Ms. Cheek on the screen. Ms. Cheek, could you give us an aye if you're in favor of the motion? Do we still have a board member Rhonda Cheek on Zoom?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to unmute myself, but now I can. Yes, I was aye, and I had my hand up.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So that the consent agenda passes by unanimous vote. Mr. Superintendent, were there any items that you wanted to highlight this evening?
Yes, good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I wanted to take a moment to highlight a project that the board just approved as part of its consent agenda, and that is item 3T. And that is a new 45-classroom elementary school that will be built next to the existing Mint Hill Middle School. This is an approximately $24.5 million project. Work will begin this month, and the school, the new school, is expected to open in August of 2022. It will provide relief for three schools, Bain, Lebanon Road, and Piney Grove Elementary Schools. Also excited to announce that 100% of this project is MWSBE, meaning it will be worked on by minority women's small business enterprise companies. And so thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much. So now we're going to move on to our two action items tonight. The first action item is election of the board appointees to the Community Equity Committee. This is in accordance with policy ADAA, which states that in odd-numbered years, the board appoints up to 20 members to its Community Equity Committee, as nominated by each member of the board, as well as by the student advisor. I'm going to turn to Board Vice Chair Thelma Byers Bailey to make a motion to accept these appointments.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the 20 individuals nominated by each member of the board and the student advisor to the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education Community Equity Committee, as presented in the attached document entitled "May 11, 2021 Nominees." Each board member and the student advisor has before them the names of the 20 nominated individuals. The terms of these appointees will be from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2023. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor from Ms. Byers Bailey, a second from Ms. De La Hara. Do we have any discussion? Anybody wish to discuss? Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Fowler.
Is there a way that I could just speak on my nominees?
Sure, you could speak on them if you'd like. We don't have to, but you can if you would like to.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out the two nominees that I made. I'm nominating Kushi Byatt. She is a 14-year-old freshman at Olympic High School. She's a part of AP and honors classes. Mrs. Byatt has been nationally recognized for her podcast, and she is a TEDx speaker. She loves helping her peers and embraces them themselves, and has been oriented towards breaking the stigma and being the change. In her free time, Kushi enjoys playing varsity tennis and writing articles for companies all around the world. So you can search up her name, and you can see all the amazing things that Kushi Byatt's done. Also, I'm nominating Gerald Sanchez, who is a 17-year-old junior at Mallard Creek High School. He is also a part of the Mallard Creek Academy of Engineering. Mr. Sanchez is top ex-curriculars include DECA, SCCLA, the NEHS, the American Red Cross, and he has always had a passion for education equity. And he has been provided opportunities to pursue this passion with the new gen peacemakers, peacebuilders, and he's worked with the CTE coordinators at his school to discover research in order to figure out how to better serve underrepresented minorities, low-income, and first-generation populations in CMS. So those were the two nominees that I have, and I just wanted to speak on how great they were. Thank you.
Thank you. They're going to be great additions to the committee. Does anybody else wish to share anything or anything else you want to discuss before we call the vote? And I'll just thank everybody for, you know, signing up to... Some folks are re-upping, who are already veterans of the committee, so thanks to those, and some folks have moved on and are being replaced by others. Committee's doing great work. So glad to see it move into its next generation. So I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote then. All those in favor of Ms. Byers Bailey's motion, please let it be known by a show of hands.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next, we are going to move on to the other part of the Community Equity Committee. We have four vacancies that we need to consider filling. These individuals elected tonight will complete a term that expires on June 30, 2022. And here is the process for selecting the board-elected members of the Community Equity Committee. So it is a different process than what we just went through. I'll go ahead and read it, but it's a little bit long, but it will make sense once we do it. Every board member will receive a ballot with their name on it. You will have five minutes to select up to four names. You will select a name by highlighting it on your ballot. During this five-minute period, you may consult with other board members around the dais. Under no circumstances may ballots be taken out of Room 267. At the end of the five-minute period, Mr. Charles Jeter will collect the ballots. He and Ms. Nicole Kelly and Ms. Yvette Blakeney will then tabulate the votes. After the votes are tabulated, Mr. Jeter will take the results to me, the chair, and I will announce the names of those persons who have been elected to the committee. If fewer than four individuals are announced, I will ask if there is a motion to begin another round of voting. If such a motion is made properly seconded and approved, the board will repeat steps one through four, except that board members may only select the number of names equal to or less than the number of seats remaining. For example, if we selected two individuals during the first round of voting, then we would only be able to select up to two individuals during the next round of voting. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Charles Jeter. I think I need a ballot, too.
I have the ballots in front of me. Y'all should not have any ballots as of right now. I would ask y'all to hold off for just a second before you start filling those out. I will offer, Madam Chair, that Ms. Rhonda Cheek, our general counsel, Ms. Mayes, as her proxy vote. And with that, Madam Chair, your five-minute clock starts now. Yes, ma'am.
I should turn this on. I know that we're still... In fact, they have a staff equity committee. There are some staff names on this list.
So the rule, there is no rule about it? That was a decision y'all made a couple years ago. There is no rule.
Accomplished people, my gosh.
Yes, I got reelected.
Some high achievers, too. All the students there from...
What'd I give to you, right? We give to Jeter. What'd you say?
Yeah, I thought you were lobbying. You did ask me that. Okay. Question for Carol, because there's somebody that I'm wondering.
She said, "Don't walk away with your ballot." She said, "Don't walk with the ballot."
No, you just can't leave the room.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Shetley, she apparently did not have one of the applications.
Oh. Okay. Can you...
I'll go ahead and go on the rest of ballots.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Thank you.
Highlighting up to four names.
With asterisks.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Yes, Mr. Jeter. Okay. All right, colleagues. So we have, from this first round of voting, we have two individuals who have surpassed five votes each. So that would be Deborah Blackwood and Latoya Owens. So congratulations to Ms. Blackwood and Ms. Owens. Thank you so much. We have two other individuals who came very close. They have four votes each. That's Stephanie Klitch and Alyssa Sharp. And then Katrina Barnett has three votes. Cindy Kramer has three votes. Brent Morris has three votes. Jacqueline Parker has two votes. Denise Panino has two votes. And Suzanne Phillips and Leroy Ray each have one vote. So is there a motion for another round of voting?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion from Mr. Strain for a second round of voting with the second... Okay, we've got a motion from Mr. Strain for a second round of voting with a second from Ms. Ship. And I guess, are you going to give us more ballots? Fresh ballots?
Madam Chair, so remember, mind of the board, there's only two names. So you may only circle two names during this voting period.
And by the way, you cannot select, going to what I hear correctly, you cannot elect Ms. Blackwood or Ms. Owens because they've already been selected. So they are excluded from the ballot, even though you will still see their names.
And Margaret's being lobbied as we speak.
Madam Chair, time starts now.
Got some recommendations? Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I was wondering where that was. Sorry.
Yeah, that's Ms. Marshall, Jim Bell. Yes, it is done. Okay. The ballot's gone on back and forth. You can't do this. It's quite a lot. You want to vote for this one? I should wish. Coach. Coach. It's more...
All right. So here's an update. We... No one has reached five votes in the second round. I'll give you a vote count here. And then if you want to go to a third round, we can. That's up to the board. Two individuals received four votes. That would be Brent Morris and Alyssa Sharp. Two individuals received three votes. That would be Katrina Barnett and Stephanie Klitch. Sidney Kramer received two votes. Jacqueline Parker received one vote. So anybody... Do we have a motion for a third round? Or do you want to close voting?
I think we can close voting.
Second? Do we have agreement on that?
No, I move that we go to a second... A third round.
Okay. We have a...
Oath is drawn and voted. Oath is drawn and voted.
Okay. Okay, so we have a...
I move that we move to a third round of voting.
Okay, so motion from Ms. Delahara, second from Ms. Ship. We're moving on to a third round of voting, so we need a third round of ballots. And as a reminder, we need five votes for an individual to get on the committee. And you can vote for up to two individuals. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion? Let it be. Nobody's showing hands.
Vote, guys. Vote.
Okay. Any opposed? I'm sorry. Okay, that motion passes. So we're moving on to the third round of voting.
You didn't get Rhonda's vote. That's not good.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that. Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
You have to remember Rhonda's on...
I didn't hear what you said.
Andre has my votes.
Question from one out of the third round.
It was Klitch and Sharp at first.
I understand, but that one... When we were just... It was Brent, Morris, Alyssa Sharp. And so I'm recommending to...
Once again, members of the board, you have the ability to select two individuals. You have five minutes, but you are not required to use all of them.
I know that one. Catfish. I'll keep on mute. Sorry.
Hugely committed. He was the first person to say it. Because we had Brent and Alyssa, we're the head four. I'm just suggesting to go to...
And do the first. Okay.
Are we done? Charles?
I think he's... Did you get ours?
If y'all are ready, please let me know.
Oh, we're all done.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I thought they were tabulating. Right here.
Thank you. Not quite.
Take your time. You have one minute.
I think I'm gonna go here. See what happens. Hold up. Splash one out. Shot. All right. Which one is shot?
Okay, everybody. We have two more committee members. Brent Morris and Alyssa Sharp have both hit the five-vote threshold. So they will join Dr. Deborah Blackwood and Dr. Latoya Owens on the Equity Committee. And I wanted to apologize to Dr. Owens and Dr. Blackwood for... I didn't have your resumes in front of me when I said your name before and I left off the doctor. I know you worked hard to earn those degrees, so I wanted to acknowledge them. So thank you all very much. And we will follow up with letting you know when the next Equity Committee meeting is and get you oriented. Thank you ever so much for your service. And we are done with that. So now we're going to move on to our reports and information items for the night. We'll begin with the report on budget amendments for March 2021. I'll turn to the superintendent for this report.
As presented, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have report on financial statements for March 2021.
As presented.
And then the report on capital project ordinances for March 2021.
As presented.
All right. And then we have the school composition report. And I will turn to the superintendent for this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one is not as presented. At this time, I want to welcome our Associate Superintendent for Magnet Student Assignment and Advanced Programs, Ms. Akeisha Craven-Howell, who will present a report on school composition. This report tracks the annual changes in the socioeconomic composition of schools and provides information on the impact of the school choice system on the socioeconomic composition of schools. Data included in this report guides recommendations on increasing socioeconomic diversity in our schools. Ms. Craven-Howell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Winston. Good evening, Board members. It's a pleasure to share with you this evening a report on school composition in the district. Just a quick reminder, this report is one of six that are outlined in Board Policy ADA. And as Superintendent Winston shared, the school composition report tracks the annual changes in socioeconomic status composition of schools. And I will go through, just as a reminder for some board members as well as the viewing public, how we developed SES in the district. During the last student assignment review, which started in 2016, the board worked together to identify factors which, when taken together, influenced their learning environment. It's important that when we talk about these factors, we talk about them as in aggregate and how they affect the learning environment and not as applied to individual students. We pulled data from the U.S. Census as well as the American Community Survey. And you can see there are the factors that we included in that assessment. We looked at English language ability, family composition, family income, home ownership, and the highest educational attainment of any parent in the home. We averaged each of those factors across the 548 census block groups in Mecklenburg County, which contained at least one CMS student. We used the block groups because these were the smallest geographic area for which we had this data. And then we ranked each of those block groups according to their weighted average of those factors. It's important to remember that when we were developing our approach to measuring SES in the district, the decision was made at that time not to set hard cutoffs for each of these metrics, such that above or below a certain point would be low SES or high SES. What that means is that we ranked these 548 block groups relative to each other. We took the top third and said these would be communities that are associated with high SES factors, the middle third, medium SES factors, and then the lower third, low SES factors. And you can see... And you can see that distribution here on the map, where the yellow represents low SES, the light green, medium SES, and then the darker green, high SES. As we look at SES diversity in CMS, you can see that the distribution of students and where they reside in communities is close to that one-third designation in each of the three SES block groups. Before I go on, I think it's helpful, particularly given the year that we've had in navigating the public health conditions, I think it's helpful to share a little bit of context around enrollment this year in the district. Certainly, we enrolled over 7,000 students fewer than what was projected. I think it's important to know that our projections are based on enrollment trends by school and by grade level. And so our enrollment this year was lower by about 7,000 students than what we projected. So these were students who were not in attendance in CMS, who we thought would enroll and did not. These are not current CMS students. The majority of that decline was due to a decrease in new student enrollment. And I'll share a little bit more about some patterns there. You can see here for the last three years, 19, 20, and 21, the enrollment... Sorry, this is one too fast. There we go. New student enrollment in the district. And what you can see as you compare across low, medium, and high SES communities, the most significant decrease in new student enrollment came from students who live in communities with lower SES factors. By contrast, when we look at the number of students who withdrew from CMS over time, including this year, the most significant increase in student withdrawals came from students who live in communities with higher SES factors. So let's now get into SES distribution across our schools. When we do so, it's important to look at how students are assigned to schools first. So there are two student assignment approaches in the district. The first is homeschools. Every student in the district is assigned a homeschool based on their address. And Policy JCA, which governs student assignment, requires that all homeschool attendance areas be contiguous. The second student assignment approach is magnet assignment. Students elect to attend magnet schools by participating in the school choice lottery. And then our magnet programs are either full magnet, such that all seats in that school are assigned via the lottery, or they're magnets with a homeschool attendance area, which you'll oftentimes hear referred to as a partial magnet. In that case, some seats are assigned based on homeschool. Others are assigned based on the school choice lottery. In addition to homeschool assignment and the school choice lottery or magnet assignments, we also annually, in the district, respond to over 6,000 requests for reassignment and transfer. When we look at our homeschools, just over 80% of our student population are in a seat that we would designate as a homeschool seat. I think that's important to know because as we think about levers to increase socioeconomic diversity in our schools, the vast majority of our students are in homeschool-assigned seats. Of CMS's 178 schools, 106 of these are homeschools without a magnet component. And then when we add in those schools that have both the homeschool seats and magnet school seats, there are 151 schools. The bars that you see here represent SES diversity by learning community. Now, in some ways, this is arbitrary because we determine which schools comprise each of the learning communities. But it's also significant in some ways because our learning communities are geographically based. So you begin to get a sense for how students are distributed across SES communities by learning community. The next set of slides will take kind of a double click into each of these learning communities and look at the schools within that learning community. The first learning community is the Central One Learning Community. And just to orient you to the slide a little bit, that first bar is the CMS overall distribution of SES. The second bar is the Central One Learning Community distribution of SES. And then each of the bars that follow are individual schools within the Central One Learning Community. It's less important that we look at the specific schools here, but more important that you see the pattern of the colors and the distribution of the colors. And what we see in the Central One Learning Community is that all of the schools, with the exception of the school at the bottom, which is Oakdale Elementary, are majority made up of students who live in communities associated with lower socioeconomic factors. As we move to the Central Two Learning Community, you can see again the distribution of SES in the schools in that learning community. And I do want to point out a couple of schools here. The first schools that I will point out are Cotswold Elementary and Billingsville Elementary. A number of you on the board will remember and were a part of the last student assignment review. And one of the decisions that the board made at that time was to pair Billingsville Elementary and Cotswold Elementary and extend the IB program, which was at Cotswold, to Billingsville. Today, both schools are IB schools. Billingsville serves students in K-2, and then that group of students goes on to the Cotswold campus, which serves students in grades three through five. You can see there the distribution of SES. And while certainly there's a smaller percentage of students in medium SES communities, this is a much more even distribution of SES than either of these two schools had prior to the pairing. I also want to point out Alexander Graham Middle and Sedgfield Middle School. Again, as a part of the last student assignment review, the board, really based on feedback from the community and being responsive to that feedback, took a look at the elementary school feeders to these two middle schools and made some changes so that you did not have one school, which was primarily high poverty, and then the other school, which was primarily low poverty. And you can see there that the changes to those elementary feeder patterns are beginning to have an effect on the SES distribution within those two schools. Finally, here, I'll point out a few full magnet programs in the Central Two Learning Community: Myers Park Traditional, Collinswood, and Piedmont. These are full magnet schools, where all of the seats are offered in the school choice lottery. A third of the seats are prioritized for each of the SES groups. And you can see at these three full magnets in particular that that is having the desired effect on the overall SES distribution in the school. This is the distribution for the Northeast Learning Community, the Northwest Learning Community, and the Southeast Learning Community. Here, I'll pause and point out a couple of schools again: Randolph Middle School, which is a full magnet school, and then Lansdowne Elementary, which is a partial magnet school with an international baccalaureate program. You can see at Lansdowne in particular, we're relatively close to that one-third distribution in each of the SES groups. And based on assignment changes that the board approved just last year, I expect that to even out even more over the next couple of years. And then finally, we have the Southwest Learning Community. And here, in this learning community, we have the most significant range. You can see at the top, at Starmount Academy, we have a school that is almost all comprised of an attendance area with communities with lower SES factors. And then at the bottom, Polo Ridge Elementary, whose attendance area is comprised of almost all communities with higher SES factors. So let's shift now from homeschools to magnet programs. Again, a reminder that we have two types of magnet programs: full magnets, where all seats are assigned via the lottery, and one-third of the seats at each grade level are assigned to each of the three SES groups. There are 27 full magnet schools in CMS. We also have partial magnet schools. Students with a homeschool assignment in these schools are seated first. The remaining seats are filled in the school choice lottery. And the lottery prioritizes the two SES groups, which most complement the homeschool attendance area. So if the vast majority of students in the homeschool attendance area, for example, are high SES, then the lottery will prioritize students who live in communities with low and medium SES factors. I think it's important when we talk about partial magnets to know that the distribution of homeschool seats and magnet seats varies greatly across our partial magnet schools. We have as few as 7% of seats designated for magnet at Rantzen IB, and as many as 66% and 73% of seats designated for magnet at University Park Creative Arts and First Ward Creative Arts. And so that distribution of magnet and homeschool seat variance has an effect on how much the lottery can influence SES distribution in the school. So that's very important to note. Of the district schools, there are 45 partial magnet schools in CMS. So the list of schools you see here are our countywide schools. These tend to be full magnet programs that students, no matter where they live in the county, can take advantage of. That top bar, again, is the overall CMS distribution of SES. And then you can see the distribution at each of the schools. I'll point out here are early colleges: Cato Middle College High School, Charlotte Mecklenburg Virtual High School, and Northwest School of the Arts, which do a good job approaching that one-third designation in each of the three categories. And for these other schools, we have opportunities to increase SES distribution or SES diversity, given the provisions in the school choice lottery. This next slide shows our schools, both full and partial, in the blue transportation zone. Here, I want to point out a couple of schools. The first is Huntington Farms. At first glance, this looks like a school where, in the magnet program, we are achieving the SES distribution. What I would point out, though, is that Huntington Farms is a partial magnet school. Its homeschool attendance area is primarily made up of communities with lower SES factors. So what we would expect to see for their SES distribution of magnet seats is a distribution that is closer to 50% medium and 50% high. Because remember, in a partial magnet school, the school choice lottery prioritizes students from communities that complement the diversity of the homeschool area. There we go. Similarly, for Kennedy Middle School. Again, at first glance, it looks like the magnet diversity that we would like. But Kennedy is also a partial magnet school, whose homeschool attendance area is primarily medium SES communities. So we would expect a distribution that's more 50% low and 50% high. I don't know if the battery is getting low on this. Sorry, I'm clicking and the slides aren't moving. Just a moment. Okay, use that? Sure, no problem. Thank you. This slide shows the distribution in the green transportation zone and then the violet transportation zone. So as we think about some of the takeaways across these slides, I think it's evidenced by the heat map, the map that had the shading of yellow and light green and dark green. One of the things that we can see is that the county is largely segregated by socioeconomic status. While the overall distribution of SES in the district is relatively close to that one-third of students in each group that the board desired, by the way that we calculated SES and ranked the block groups, it's important that we are keeping our eye on that because we can't have SES diverse schools if we don't have a socio-economically diverse district.
Could you say that again? I just missed the last word.
Yes. It's important that we are keeping our eye on the overall SES diversity of our student population in the district because our ability to have socio-economically diverse schools is dependent upon having an overall district population, which is also socio-economically diverse. We often talk about choice as our most significant lever for improving socioeconomic diversity in schools. But as was shared this evening, just over 80% of our students are actually in homeschool seats. And so we should reflect and think about that as we think about what our greatest lever is for increasing socioeconomic diversity. On average, in our homeschools, the SES distribution varies greatly. And few of our homeschools mirror the district's overall SES distribution. I think the school in the district that comes closest is South Mecklenburg High School. South Mecklenburg High School. I want to acknowledge that among our magnet programs, both our full magnet programs, as well as our partial magnet programs, that there are opportunities for us to take greater advantage of the priorities that the board put into the lottery during the last student assignment review. As I think about recommendations going forward, certainly given some of the enrollment declines of this year, but even given that, on average, we serve about 72% of school-aged students in the district, that one of the things that we should focus on as a district is recapturing, but overall increasing the share of Mecklenburg County students that we serve. Again, ensuring that we are serving a diverse student body overall in CMS so that our schools are also diverse. As I referenced before, improving the rate at which magnet seats are allocated align to SES priority. So that looks like implementing even some of the recommendations that our student speakers from earlier this evening shared with us. I thought they had some really great ideas, and I look forward to following up with them to get additional details on how we can implement it. I think it also looks like targeted marketing for some specific magnet programs that just right now are not attracting diverse populations. And that is the case. And then increasing resources and support to those same magnet programs that are having difficulty attracting interest, but also attracting interest across diverse communities. I think it is also critical that we begin preparing now for the 2022 Student Assignment Review. So by policy, the board takes on a comprehensive student assignment review every six years. The last student assignment review began in 2016. I think one of the most prevalent pieces of feedback we got from the last student assignment review was that we simply did not spend enough time. And because of that, we were not able to engage the community fully. And so I would recommend that we begin preparing now to launch that student assignment review as early in the calendar year 2022 as possible. That preparation looks like updating the SES block group designations. You only have to drive around our county to see that housing patterns have changed significantly. So we can expect that SES heat map to look quite different when we have the most recent U.S. Census data to update that. We also need to continue digging into how external factors, some of which are out of our control, but certainly which influence how we draw attendance boundaries and assign students to school. That includes changes in housing patterns, the city's 2040 plan, looking at our own long-range planning work. We also need to review the district's portfolio for untapped opportunities to increase SES diversity. I believe we should also assess innovative approaches to student assignment. That does not mean that necessarily we will change policy, but just to know what other districts are doing and having success with so that we can understand how that may or may not inform our work going forward. And then finally, considering messaging, which helps the community understand why, as a board and as a staff, SES diversity is a major factor. why as a board and as a staff, SES diversity is important to us. When I think back and reflect on some of the conversations that we had when we initially, in the last student assignment review, decided to include SES diversity as a priority, a lot of what we talked about was the conditions that it creates in learning environments. Not that SES diversity in and of itself is an end goal, but rather it is one of a number of strategies to influence the learning environment that permits our core strategies, things like great teaching, increasing time spent on quality instruction, increasing access to advanced coursework. It creates the conditions for those strategies to take hold. I do want to share again with the board, as well as the viewing public, that CMS is a part of the inaugural cohort of the Bridges Collaborative, which is a part of the Century Foundation. And some of you may remember that we had a staff member from the Century Foundation support us during the last student assignment review. This is a collaborative of school districts, charter schools, charter management organizations, and housing organizations across the country, all of whom in some way have diversity as part of their goals. I believe they reached out to us and invited us to apply based on the SES diversity goal in Board Policy JCA, as well as the school composition goals outlined in Board Policy ADA, JCA ADA. One of the early outcomes of our participation in this collaborative is a closer working relationship with Enlivian, which is formerly the Charlotte Housing Authority. They currently serve just over 6,000 CMS students. And we are working closely with them to make sure that as those students are making decisions with their families about their new housing, that they are aware of the school options that are available to them and they know how to navigate enrollment, the school choice lottery, and request for reassignment and transfer. I welcome your questions.
Thank you for that. Board members, do you have any questions? Dr. Jones?
Your mic is mine.
Your mic.
I'm curious about the nationwide school choice, the innovative approaches. Could you give a little nutshell summary of some schools that, or school districts?
Yes, ma'am. There are a number of school districts that are involved in the collaborative. There are several right here in North Carolina, including Winston-Salem Forsyth and Wake County. We've also been connected to individuals from the New York Department of Education. I have a conversation with someone who reached out to me from the School District of Philadelphia as a part of this collaborative, wanting to learn more about the innovative work that the board has already done as part of the 2016 student assignment review. A lot of the conversation is about messaging. How do we have these difficult conversations in our community? There are also conversations about assignment approaches that not, that don't lend themselves to busing, but that do allow for increased socioeconomic diversity. I think it's very interesting that typically in these types of collaboratives, it's mostly school districts, but you also have housing authorities. And to me, that acknowledges the significant role that housing patterns play in our ability to create socioeconomic diversity in our schools.
Which is something we don't have control of.
That's exactly right. However, when we are collaborating with housing authorities, collaborating with our municipal planning partners, it's certainly an area in which we have influence, but I absolutely agree. It is not an area over which we have any control.
Ms. Sawyer?
Thank you, Carol Sawyer. Do we have, I'm looking at the proportion of students that are enrolled in our middle colleges. And those are disproportionately high SES. And have we done any work to see what the barriers are? Or what the, is it a transportation problem? What is, what is keeping some students out of those schools?
Yeah. I think we need to do more to understand what those barriers are, but I think a lot of it is awareness. We've done a lot to work with CPCC and have multiple paths for entry such that it's not, you know, one score on one standardized assessment that is the path to entry. So there is broader access. I think we need to do more to increase awareness.
Thank you.
Ms. Ship?
You mentioned that 80% of students are in their homeschools, not in magnets.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think you hit on this some, but why do you think this is so and what are we doing? Because I feel like it might be communication, a lot of it, as to why families don't choose choice or look at the lottery because the communication and the process can be difficult.
I think it's less that families aren't opting for choice. It's more availability. So when we look at the distribution of seats in the district, the vast majority of them are homeschool seats. There are 151 schools in the district with homeschool seats. 106 of those are fully homeschools. When we look at full magnet programs, there are 27 full magnet programs. When we look at partial magnet programs, there are 45. And the number of magnet seats in each of those is not equal. Again, that range goes from a low of 7% of magnet seats all the way up to 73% of magnet seats. And so there are certainly magnet programs that do not fill. Part of that is awareness, part of that is perception of quality of the school offering. But I believe that distribution of 80% of students in homeschool seats is primarily driven by the fact that the vast majority of the seats in CMS are homeschool seats.
And as we've looked at the pairing of schools, are we looking at others in terms of parent? And what does the data look like? Is that, have we really done a deep dive into that? I know we talked about it some. And is this something else we want to continue to look at since it's shown some real promise?
Absolutely. I mean, it's critical that we look in these schools at the same student outcomes that we expect in all of our schools. Because again, the SES diversity in and of itself, it's not the end goal. In some of these schools, we've seen early indicators of improvements. I can remember in the first two years of the Dilworth Elementary and Sedgfield Elementary pairing, we saw an increase in the number of students of color who were identified as TD that had not been previously identified. At Sedgfield Middle School, just in the year of planning and some of the efforts and intentional focus that went into the year of planning before those middle school feeders switched out, we saw that school improve a letter grade. So there are lots of early indicators that the work of the board in the 2016 student assignment review is having great effect.
Good. That's it for now. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Let's see. Ms. Sawyer, you went once, right? Okay, and I'll come back to you. So I see Ms. Bires Bailey and then Ms. Marshall.
We have a couple of, several, I guess, specialized magnet schools that are pretty much considered full magnets. And which ones are the most popular of the schools? That, I mean, that fill up quickly and have long waiting lists?
Certainly among our most popular programs are our Montessori schools, year over year. That is a set of schools that have a waitlist. Our STEM high school, Philip O'Barry, is a school that typically has a waitlist. And then I would say oftentimes, demand is less driven by the actual magnet theme itself, but a particular school. So for example, if we look across our middle school IB programs, there's a relatively wide variance in the amount of demand, the length of the waitlists at each of those schools. And I think that trend continues across a number of our themes. And so one of the things that we have been most focused on in the magnet office is not expanding our portfolio, but increasing parity within our portfolio such that regardless of your transportation zone, if you are in an IB middle school, your experience is the same. And I can acknowledge that that is simply not the case right now. And so we have more work to do.
With respect, you mentioned Montessori is one of our high-demand full magnets.
Yes, ma'am.
What, if any, access do neighborhood children have to that program?
For all of our full magnet programs, and Montessori is a full magnet program in every case, the board policy has a proximity priority. So what that means is that there's a certain percentage of seats set aside for students who live within a one-third mile radius of the school. For programs like Montessori, which are incredibly popular, oftentimes more students that live within that radius are applying than there are seats in the set aside. And so that group of students don't get to take advantage of that priority, but instead go into the broader lottery and will be evaluated by the lottery against all students who apply.
That, that, most of our Montessoris go K5, pre-K5?
Pre-K6. And then JT Williams, which is our secondary Montessori, serves students grades seven through 12.
How has that one traveled? Because that was a pairing, because that was a brand-new entity for CMS the last go-around when we did student assignment.
Yes, it was in high demand by our Montessori parents. And they have, they have come through. We have seen an increase in the sixth-grade Montessori program because what was happening was a lot of families were exiting Montessori at the end of fifth grade to join a comprehensive middle school rather than have their students transition to middle school at seventh grade. So what we've seen by opening that secondary program is a decrease in attrition. So we're keeping more of our sixth graders and we're seeing a high number of those students continue on to JT Williams' Montessori.
And the high school is thriving?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Marshall, then Ms. Delahara.
Thank you. First, kind of a comment to follow on some things you've just said. I know that in our bond program, and as some schools are coming on, we know that we're going to have a few more opportunities for magnets. I know, for instance, the K8 magnet in the north for language immersion. So that's an opportunity there. And a magnet high school in the south. So that's going to be another opportunity to look at. But I do, I've kind of always had a concern, frankly, that too much magnet choice can really impact homeschools. And where so many of our students are focused there, we really do need to make sure that we, we don't, that we're aware of what's happening. We can have some unintended consequences here, even though we have some really great ideas and meaning behind all that. So I appreciate the fact that you've said that you really want to work on the magnet programs that we currently have and strengthen them, give parity across the district because they should be. And then I think therefore, people will come. We will have more opportunity to those and do well with what we have there. So I appreciate that. Although I do think we're going to enjoy a few more things opening up, as they should, as our county is growing.
Yes.
So, thank you. That's just mainly a comment there. I want to go back to sort of something you really said in the very beginning about this year, which is certainly an anomaly. And I want to acknowledge that for anybody listening and following along and lots of recent conversation in our county, that I know that enrollment in every district of North Carolina has declined. Whether they were an early adopter of hybrid, whether they were a little more cautious about going, this is something we're all dealing with. I've done some research with some surrounding counties. Everyone is having the same conversation. I do think it is interesting where our lower enrollment has occurred in terms of children not enrolling. That is somewhat of a surprise to me. Do you have an idea on the grade bands? I think we do. I think we kind of, again, across the state, know it's sort of kindergarten, first grade where the biggest hole possibly is. Can you speak to that?
Yes, so we certainly saw, you know, decline in enrollment in kindergarten and first grade. And I think that is partially driven by seven, seven years old being the age at which students must be enrolled in North Carolina. So you could hold a student at home in kindergarten or first grade. And so I think we should expect perhaps some outsized kindergarten and first grade cohorts.
I would think.
Next year. We also saw a decline in the sixth grade. And my guess is that maybe students who would typically transition from charter schools or private schools and enroll in CMS for middle school simply did not. We are also working with our municipal planning partners to understand any pandemic-driven shifts in people moving into or out of Mecklenburg County. Because presumably, some of this decline in enrollment were families who, you know, relocated outside of Mecklenburg County for some reason or who had plans to relocate to Mecklenburg County and put those plans on hold. So we continue to, you know, look at different sources of data to understand this decline in enrollment, including, you know, reaching out to families to understand what drives their choices when they enroll their children in school.
Have you gotten any, I know this is early on, but do you have any information that you could share at this point about folks moving out? I wondered about this too, particularly in that low SES enrollment figure. Is there anything that's concrete yet?
At this time, we do not have anything concrete to share.
Okay, okay. Our ninth grade, did we see a drop in enrollment there or was that pretty steady?
I would, I would want to go back and check, but my recollection is that that was not a significant decrease for us.
Are you seeing enrollment next year in that K1 space? Have, has that been presenting in different ways than you thought?
Not yet. Right now, the patterns are pretty consistent. But we also know that kindergarten enrollment every year happens late. Families often wait for kindergarten beginners' days, which have just recently taken place. Some families enroll throughout the summer. So I'm working closely with our communications department on an enrollment campaign to encourage families, you know, not to wait until August or, you know, right before school starts to enroll in the district, but that we can better plan to serve students the earlier we know that they are coming.
Absolutely. That's just imperative.
Yes, I mean, this is when schools are, you know, receiving their position allotments. This is when they're hiring and recruiting teachers. So we just want to make sure that we are able to adequately plan for all of the students that we have the pleasure of serving.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Delahara?
Ms. Marshall, I answered my question, covered it, so thank you.
Okay, so any, okay, Mr. Strain, and then I'll come down. Okay, Mr. Strain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report. One of the things that, as you know, we've been talking a fair bit about is the relationships between the various decisions that we make and policies we put in place and student outcomes. And I wonder the extent to which we have data that reflects the sort of mapping of student outcomes by SES onto the SES composition of the schools so that we can see at least a correlation between the two in terms of how students of various SES categories are performing in various schools of different compositions.
We do, I'm sorry.
I think those are, I mean, there's, there's several different metrics, of course, that can be used for the student outcomes. Obviously proficiency in growth, proficiency, the EOCs, EOG scores, AP test scores, et cetera. And of course, growth.
Absolutely. Today, we do not do that correlation. When we disaggregate data, we of course are looking at race. We also look at low and high poverty schools. But remember that our SES factor includes multiple factors. So it does not include race at all. It does certainly include income, but it also includes English language ability. And certainly, we do disaggregate data based on our students who receive English language learner services. But across those five factors combined into SES, we do not today disaggregate data based on that. But I appreciate your question and your push there. And certainly, as we look at our emphasis on SES diversity, that's a And certainly, as we look at our emphasis on SES diversity, that's an important analysis to do as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much, Ms. Craven-Howell.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
Update, now let me get back to my script here. Okay, so next we have, this is something a little bit different, but our, the community Equity Committee has a subcommittee on school composition. And they have a report to, that they would like to present to the board. And so I believe we have John Murkison on Zoom getting ready to join us.
We're here.
All right, there you are.
And I think Nicole is going to have someone share my slides. When you see the page up, just let me know and I'll, I'll get going.
All right, we'll let you know when it's, so the, your slideshow is going, Mr. Murkison.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Elise, for having me here to speak tonight. I could quickly start, you know, by acknowledging my, my fellow subcommittee members for all their efforts over the past year. And also like to thank Keith Lloyd and Akeisha Craven-Howell for all their time and efforts facilitating our work. And then lastly, I'd like to acknowledge our Chair, Dr. Chance Lewis, who is the one who should be here speaking tonight, but he had a conflict. His daughter was awarded a scholarship for college and there was an event, so a good excuse to miss. And congratulations to the Lewis family and I'll try to, I'll try to do him proud, filling in in his shoes. So before we move to our recommendations, we in our report wanted to provide just a page with some context. So I'm on the page that says context for recommendations. As we all know, student assignment and school composition is one of the most important decisions the board makes, you know, which kids are going to get to go to what school. It's certainly one that gets a lot of community attention and it creates a tremendous amount of community angst, as you all well know. You know, we also know that our district is growing really fast and our communities are highly segregated. And that makes creating SES diverse schools, you know, even more difficult. So we were really focused on, you know, how do we keep SES diversity at the forefront, given all these factors? And we found through our work that we think there are real opportunities to improve outcomes in SES diversity in both the near term and the longer term. And we structured our recommendations along, along those timeframes. You know, one important piece of the puzzle, puzzle is board messaging and not waiting until a reassignment process is underway to communicate the benefits of diversity in schools, as well as making sure those actual benefits are clearly communicated. Akeisha talked about this a little bit as well. You know, often the public gets ahead of the board and CMS in messaging around assignment changes and puts any proposed change on the defensive before it's even been discussed, you know, broadly. It leaks into an article and then it's, you know, playing catch-up. And so as we looked at this, to consider how the board and the district can be proactive to help everyone fully understand the context and full implications of any boundary or assignment changes. You know, another part of this we looked at closely was recommendations in the context of helping the public better understand, you know, indicators of school quality. If you're not deeply immersed in CMS or live in the field of education, there's a real lack of information regarding indicators of school quality. And ultimately, people default to, you know, the sort of overall letter grade of a school. And then finally, as context for recommendations, Akeisha went through the SES, you know, metrics and how that's done. But, you know, the board in 2016 set that as a methodology designated the county's block roots into low, middle, and high. In 2019, 2020, 85 schools exceeded 33% low of students in low SES and another 53 schools exceeded 33% of students residing in high SES communities. So we, we have a very kind of imbalanced district today. Next slide, please. So moving on, if we could go to the next, the next, are we on the next page? I'm looking at it on my Facebook Live and I don't see it, just want to make sure.
So we're on.
Perfect. So we structure our recommendations, thinking through kind of timeframe to implement and context around implementation, near term and then medium to longer-term courses of action. So on this page, I'm going to focus on near-term recommendations. We centered those around practice recommendations that can be implemented now. Our first recommendation is to create conditions which make school assignment changes more palpable and easier for people to understand. First piece of this is for CMS to develop a means to communicate school strengths beyond the state report card. You know, currently, the primary indicator for the public tends to be the overall letter grade the school receives, which we know is heavily weighted towards proficiency. You know, this, this report card drives perception of schools, neighborhoods, impacts where people choose to live, and, and impacts real estate values. You know, we think there needs to be a strategic communication plan around indicators of school quality and school performance, as well as more communication around what makes up the totality of the school letter grade. Related to this, you'll see in our longer-term recommendations around communication of school quality, you'll see we also recommend, you know, CMS improve efforts to ensure all schools are of high quality in order to further lower barriers to acceptance. You can communicate indicators, but we need those indicators to be strong. In addition, we recommend CMS to prioritize and institutionalize a practice of family engagement and transition planning, including both sending and receiving families, to make sure implementation of assignment changes is done in ways that best serve students and result in smoother and better assignment implementation, kind of what happens after the vote is passed. CMS has done this with some success in the past. I know my wife was part of the transition team for Central Middle School. But it's not a consistent part of the reassignment process. You know, generally speaking, we, we find and believe that more public confidence in the execution aspect of a boundary change or reassignment, as well as more consistent execution across reassignments, you know, utilizing lessons from past assignments as part of this, will be very helpful in lowering community resistance to future assignments, as well as ensuring students and families receive the best educational experience when going through a transition. To kind of put it simply, execution matters. And I think sometimes in experience, the, the board focuses on the goals and the strategy and the, the plan, and then the implementation post-vote maybe doesn't get the focus that it, that it deserves. Finally, in advance of the 2020 comprehensive review, we recommend the board consider, review the findings and consider implementing the recommendations of the Student Assignment Review Task Course, which was formed after the last student assignment period. And as full disclosure, I was a member of that task course. It was focused on fairness in the reassignment process, better communication around proposed reassignments, and other lessons learned during the assignment. You know, these recommendations should be revisited in order to improve community outreach processes and ensure all impacted communities have equal opportunities for engagement. So our second near-term recommendation is to prioritize SES diversity in school boundary decisions. School Board Policy JCA, as was mentioned in a prior presentation, articulates four goals and gives equal weight to each. Prioritizing SES diversity in your weightings would facilitate decisions to enable the district to bring more students of diverse backgrounds together. I would add here that one of the ways we looked at our work and viewed our recommendations was through the kind of lens of current policy versus current system. Current policy meaning without any changes, so the status quo. Has the district maximized the opportunity to create SES diverse schools? You know, our work shows the honest answer is no. So in the longer-term recommendations, we're going to lay out changes to policies and goals that would further facilitate the creation of diverse schools. But we also know that under, just under current policies and practices, CMS does have the ability to create more diverse schools, just by making sure it's truly a priority. Along those lines, you know, the board should use this equity lens every single time there's an assignment decision before you. You know, really making sure that the SES diversity is part of the discussion around who gets to go to that school. And then finally, as part of this recommendation, we, we recognize the board does face upcoming boundary decisions, I believe in June. This is an opportunity for CMS and the board to prioritize the creation of diverse schools, and, and we would ask that you use it. The last near-term recommendation is to continue to leverage choice. The lottery weighting system, Akeisha discussed this as well, you know, provides a tool that has led to some very diverse and balanced, and frankly, very high-performing schools, which stand out in a heavily SES segregated system that we have today. Choice programs represent an opportunity to create diverse schools, and CMS should evaluate those opportunities and potential needs for additional magnets. As part of this recommendation, we also saw the positive of magnets. We also had discussions about the limits to the number of magnets before you face issues of program dilution, as well as potential unintended consequences and adverse impacts to home schools. And so we recommend that you, you do look at choice and look at leveraging choice as a tool, but with consideration of the holistic impacts of those choices and acknowledgement that, you know, 80% of students do attend home schools. Next, next slide, please.
You're there, you're on the next slide.
Okay, great, thank you. So on our longer-term recommendations, these are things we thought the board should consider in preparation for and during the 2022 assignment review, as well as, you know, beyond that. The first one is around messaging, engagement, and acceptance. You know, we recognize, again, the importance of impacted communities accepting changes and, and being willing to further the efforts that the board proposes and passes. We saw this play out broadly across the last student assignment. And we know that changes to student, student assignment will always create pressure and anxiety. It's a pretty universal thing. When a parent is happy with their school, any change creates stress. That doesn't mean that CMS has no role in creating a better foundation in which to pursue school composition changes, or those anxiety levels can't be lowered. So as part of this recommendation, we focus on the following areas. First, you know, authentically engage families in solutions both prior to making recommendations to the board, and then working with impacted community and parent leaders in messaging and engagement in order to maximize acceptance of changes once they are passed. We've seen this done, the success in select examples, but again, doing it consistently is the key. You know, two, to ensure schools across CMS are consistently high quality, that such disparities in quality, real or perceived, are not a significant barrier to acceptance. You know, ultimately, we, we know the perception is there, that all schools are not created equal, and this heavily impacts the ability of CMS and the board to effectively implement more SES diverse schools. You know, we as a subcommittee had some very good and honest discussions with staff on this point, and Akeisha referenced this during her Q and A tonight. You know, we know we can't say all programs are of equal quality today. So while we believe there are standalone benefits to SES diverse schools for all students, you know, the ultimate goal of CMS is to provide each student a high-quality education. Like Akeisha also said this in her comments, but, you know, SES diversity isn't the ultimate end goal. Ensuring schools are of high quality absolutely has to remain the top priority. And that pursuit of high-quality schools will also further open avenues for acceptance of assignment changes. The next one is, you know, CMS and the board should replicate strategies that worked well in prior assignments. For example, use the parent schools. And also look to improve practices which did not around, you know, engagement and communication. There's a saying, to do more of that which is working and do less of that which is not. And around future assignment, CMS would be well-served to keep that in mind. Finally, and again, I think Akeisha mentioned this as well, it'd be very valuable for CMS and the board to find ways to codify and then intentionally communicate both CMS's goals around diversity and the expected benefits of increasing diversity, and measure outcomes against those goals and communicate it consistently to the public. Make sure that that message around the reasons and rationales and benefits of diversity doesn't pop up once every six years around an assignment and then fades to the background for the remaining period. Our next long-term recommendation is a comprehensive review of assignment models. We recommend that the board direct the superintendent team to study assignment models across the country, particularly in districts of similar size and kind of geographic configuration. I want to, want to say clearly that as a subcommittee, we felt it was well outside our individual and collective expertise to, to fully evaluate alternative systems and make a recommendation to the board around a specific one. But we all agreed CMS should be well-versed in alternatives, and as a board, you should understand how those could potentially work in CMS. You know, this also includes considerations such as home school choice. And then in addition, you know, I think one of the things we discussed and recommend is CMS should consider how changing demographics and population shifts will contribute to or limit diversity in its future assignment decisions. You know, the topic here is really around, there's a lot of focus on what the numbers say today, but as we look at, you know, neighborhoods, the 2040 plan, other things that we know are there, working to take those into better account around planning. I know there's, I believe, some state limits around what all can be done there, but to the extent it's within guidelines to try to, you know, look ahead, look out the front windshield a little bit as well in planning around assignment and, and student boundaries. Next slide, please.
You're, you're there, you're on the next slide.
Great, so just the last page, the last, last long-term recommendation around Policy JCA. As you all know, the policy is drafted, has, you know, limitations, there are policy limitations, which the board must follow, or goals that sort of is limitations, which the board can choose not to follow, but certainly guide behavior. We ask the board to consider addressing these limitations in the context of furthering SES diversity. Examples of these policy limitations would be, you know, contiguous boundary requirements. I mean, for goals, things such as intact feeder patterns and keeping neighborhoods together. You know, many of these limit the ability to create SES diverse schools and should be examined in that light. You know, in particular, exploring a range of opportunities around more flexibility and contiguous boundaries would allow for more alternatives. And can be done without causing significant increases in distance or travel time for kids to go to schools. I want to emphasize that point, and our, our work in the subcommittee around contiguous boundaries was, was really focused on the fact that there are situations where you can, you can hop a corner perhaps and, and actually send kids to schools that are closer or equally as close, or just slightly farther away and have a big impact on diversity. Not being able to, to cross a boundary, a single boundary, is a very big limiter in trying to design, you know, design boundaries that are, that are maximizing diversity, given the geographic constraints and our segregated housing patterns. It's not, not meant to be a call for, you know, throwing caution to the wind and, and going with cross-district busing. That's a, that's a different topic for a different day that I think the appetite for will be limited. We felt the appetite would be for limited. But there are modest things that can be done that can really open up alternatives. And then finally, additional considerations for you all as board members with your spheres of influence around other key stakeholders, you know, the Housing Authority, planning departments, really, really engaging and working with them to make sure their decisions and your decisions are aligned as best possible, so that as we see, you know, planning and neighborhoods and housing activities, those are taken into account as best as possible around, around assignment decisions. In closing, I think thanks for the time, and we, we as a committee hope these recommendations provide a better pathway for the board to consider around improving SES diversity in schools.
Well, thank you, Mr. Murkison, and your, and to your colleagues for, I can, it's clear you've poured a lot of work into this, really appreciate it. Do we have any questions? For the committee members? Ms. Sawyer?
I just, again, want to thank the committee for their work. And, and I think one of the recommendations that you talked about, we're already engaging in with our participation with the Bridges Collaborative, which will really allow us to learn about what practices are being employed to increase SES diversity across the country. So I'm, I'm excited that that, that opportunity is something that, you know, I think we, we can fulfill and we have, we are actively pursuing. So thank you for all your hard work.
Ms. Chip?
I just want to thank you and your whole committee for the work that you all have done. I'm glad to see it come full circle, because that's what this Equity Committee is all about, so. And I thank you for that and bringing it all the way full circle to recommendations and things that we will consider as well as a board. Thank you so much, and I know it was a lot of work from your group.
Anybody else? All right, thank you again. I know we will, we will stay engaged, stay in touch.
Thank you.
Okay, so I am now going to turn to the superintendent for his report for the evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things that I would like to share this evening. First off, last week, CMS received some disappointing news with the county manager's budget recommendation to the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners. First, that our full request has not been recommended for adoption, meaning we may not be able to do some of what we proposed in our budget request at a time when our students need our support more than ever. Second, that county leadership is recommending to hold back $56 million in local funding until, on as-yet disclosed date. And that is problematic on a couple of fronts. Primarily, it means that there is the very real potential for students and staff to be adversely affected. This recommendation also means that our planning must move forward in the immediate term within a known funding gap of approximately $81 million compared to our request. And as I said last week, we will continue to advocate for our students and as I said last week, we will continue to advocate for our students and our staff members. In this year, that has seen so many challenges, we made our request with their best interest at heart. And that request represents what we know our students need as the COVID pandemic continues to impact our lives in so many ways. We hope that in the end, those who are doing the work to educate the students of Mecklenburg County will be better enabled to do so rather than hindered. We cannot, and we will not, allow the struggle for adequate funding to distract us from finishing this school year strong. And with that said, I want to move to some of the great work that is being done in our school district. This week, our students returned to school buildings five days per week as testing required by state and federal authority begin. I encourage all students and staff to continue to follow safety protocols as we complete the last three weeks of this school year. On the transportation front, and I'll share briefly an update from our Transportation Department, we want to assure our families, our students, and staff that our transportation leaders communicate daily with our fuel suppliers, and we continue to receive fuel for our buses, even as the pipeline issue has caused a tightened supply regionally. As it relates to school nutrition, a very bright spot in this challenging school year is our school nutrition staff. Since the beginning of the pandemic, our staff has provided more than 1.4 million meal bundles to families via the CMS Eats at Home program. And as we shift to in-person learning for most of our students over the past months, our school nutrition staff has adapted to a hybrid model, serving our students in schools and continuing to provide meal bundles for those students at home. And this week, our school nutrition leaders shared a plan for the summer months. And as of tonight, and this number will likely grow, CMS School Nutrition expects to serve more than 33,500 customers daily during the summer months. This includes students participating in Camp CMS, as well as several community partners. With sites still being accepted through May 21st, the meal program consisting of packaged lunches prepared fresh daily will be served at at least 50 sites throughout Mecklenburg County. Now I just want to transition to graduation. Plans for graduation are well underway, and we look forward to these in-person ceremonies. We're pleased that our team's work with graduation venues has enabled us to increase the number of guests each of our graduating seniors may invite to four, to up to four. Friends and families unable to attend, and those graduating students who prefer to attend virtually, will have the opportunity to participate via a professional live stream of all ceremonies. And I would like to spend a moment on Camp CMS. Those sites for Camp CMS were announced over the past several weeks, and we're looking forward to welcoming more than 30,000 of our students to participate in this summer learning and enrichment program. During these six weeks, we will continue the work of finishing instruction for the school year and providing a foundation from which our students will grow and develop as we begin the 2021-2022 school year. Lastly, speaking of 2021-2022, I will reiterate that our plan is to return to in-person instruction five days a week for the next school year. We recently shared a survey with full remote academy families asking about learning environment preferences for next year. The results of that survey will guide our decision-making as far as making a recommendation for a virtual option, keeping in mind that any virtual option beyond our virtual high school that existed prior to COVID must comply with state legislation and must be approved by the state. We will communicate more about next school year in the coming weeks, as we continue the work of closing out this school year as strong as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I will recognize... Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this time, I will recognize any board member who wishes to make a report. I see Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would not have been able to attend tonight without Ms. Margaret over here chastising me. She called me and said I'd better wear orange.
Right.
And that is to congratulate Vance High School. I hope that you approve.
That's all right.
I'm so proud of Vance High School, soon to be Julius Chambers High School. Thanks.
The last Vance. Okay, Ms. Ship?
Yes, I just think, I think it's very important that I say thank you. This was a week of teacher appreciation, staff appreciation, before that administrator's appreciation, and I just want to say how much I thank our teachers, our staff, all of the difference that they make in the lives of every student that comes through Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. And it was great to be at the celebration of the teacher and the Teacher Assistant of the Year recently, just this past Wednesday, last Wednesday. I also had an opportunity to Zoom into an FRA lesson through Windin Springs with Ms. Miller's class to see math in action, and that was great. And also to bring greetings to the family engagement staff today at their monthly meeting to hear from family advocates, counselors, and social workers talking about the great work they're doing to continue to keep our children and families engaged. Tuckusija was highlighted for their work, the great jobs they're doing, the home visits, they're celebrating Students of the Month, they're making sure that kids and families have uniforms at schools, they have snacks and materials. And so I just want to say thank you, because our staff is constantly at work on behalf of all of our children in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. And I think it's important that we recognize the great work always that they do in such a season as we're in now. Thank you.
Ms. Fires Bailey?
Thank you. I guess I get accused a lot of always bragging about what's going on in our CTE programs at Olympic. And I'm going to get, you can fuss at me again, but they just accumulate and achieve a lot. The team of Olympic students in their IT Career Academy won a national competition for creating an ad that promotes Earth Day awareness. The Academy of Finance graduate won the NAF National Alumni of the AGIO Award, and a 14-year-old Olympic NAF Career Academy freshman was selected to deliver a TED Talk in New Jersey about leadership. All five NAF Career Academies at Olympic received an audit score of being NAF Distinguished Academies. That's not easy to do. The Olympic is only the third high school in America in over 40 years to have ever achieved this rare distinction, and I cannot let it go without bringing that to the attention of our public. Thank you.
Wow. Okay. Ms. Marshall?
I want to just sort of piggyback a little bit on what Ms. Ship said as we're kind of wrapping this up, because I just hear from parents all the time who are astounded and amazed and so appreciative of what teachers have done for their students this year in all situations. And I also think that we've had a lot of community members who've really put a lot of work in supporting families as well. And this is, as we're coming out of the pandemic, we all know that this week and next week, we're going to face some challenges. And we have lots of families who are food insecure, who are housing insecure, certainly affects performance of students. But I was talking today to a friend who is part of a community organization that staffed Westerly Hills for a huge food pantry that will continue on in the summer. I saw a thing on television the other night of one of our Teacher of the Year candidates at Windsor Park who has staffed this enormous store of food, uniforms, tech help. It's just really amazing what our folks have done. So the conversations, sometimes on a very large level, don't really match what's happening down the ground, and I think we can't ever say enough of what those efforts are. I was a heart math tutor this year, as I've been for a number of years, and just community work across the district has been really amazing, REEDs, tutors, those sorts of things. We can't wait to get back to all the supports that our community is ready to give because they're chomping at the bit. And I'm so thankful, but I really want to thank staff for all they have done, continue to do for our students. And everybody's kind of hanging on by their fingernails this week, so let's just keep it together, keep it in the middle of the road, and appreciate everybody.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Delahore?
I'll go, because different approach, but I appreciate that Ms. Marshall mentioned housing instability and food deserts, because certainly those exist widely in our community. And while I also went to the teacher celebration and been involved in a lot of Teacher of the Year, Teacher Assistant Year celebratory things going on, I also got really inspired this week by our retreat that we did, and sort of thinking about SMART goals, and wrote several. I'm just going to read two, because I don't want to take up the whole night. But in listening to our Board of County Commissioners talk about truly caring about educational outcomes, it occurred to me that I could practice my SMART goal writing, and I came up with a few of them to consider, areas where they can specifically focus on outcomes under their control that will directly affect student learning. Give it a try and see what y'all think. I call on the Board of County Commissioners to reduce or to provide housing for 1,894 students, thereby reducing our number of McKinnney-Vento students in Mecklenburg County, which is currently 2,894, to 1,000 by June of 2022. Your immediate focus on solving housing instability is desperately needed so students can thrive in a stable environment producing better outcomes. Here's another example. Black students are two times as likely to be hospitalized for asthma and four times as likely to die from it as white students, white children are due to poor air quality in urban areas. I'd like to see the Board of County Commissioners set a goal of reducing both of those numbers by half by June of 2022. Let's let our children grow up to be adults, and let's also keep them out of the hospital so that they have more time in school, which of course directly affects student outcomes. I've got a whole host more, but I'll just leave it at that. I think we've got serious work that takes serious people and good faith partners to align our community goals together if we really want to achieve differences in student outcomes. Thank you.
All right. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, stacker.
All in favor of the motion? Let it be known by a show of hands?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.